One minute, man. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. We have got the five o'clock session of the public comments. There is no one here to address the council. We have no cards. And so therefore, we're going to go to the city attorney for closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have five closed session items this evening. Three are existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. The case names and the parties are set forth on the agenda along with the case numbers. Then we have, and one is for the airport authority, one is for the city council. We also have an anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D4. And lastly, we have real estate negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. And the property is designated on the agenda as well as the negotiating parties. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the close or at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock meeting.
City Attorney, any questions from the council members? If not, we're going to adjourn to a creative session. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Running a little behind. My apologies for that. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. We had a closed session and a lot of items and took a little longer than what we thought. Mr. Attorney, you want to give a briefing on that?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had five items that are all set forth on the agenda, three of which are existing litigation. The case names and the numbers are on there. Those are items A, B, and E. We also had real estate negotiations under item D pursuant to government code 54956.8. In connection with that matter, Councilmember Vias abstained from participating. And we had another item, anticipated litigation under item C pursuant to government code 54956.9D4. And council members, Mayor Cox and Councilmember Kennedy abstained from participation in those closed sessions. At this time, all the information regarding the items is set forth on the agenda, and there is no reportable action at this time.
Thank you. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have the invocation and the pledge allegiance. The invocation will be by Captain Sylvan Young, Salvation Army. And we will rise for that, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by our police chief, Sam Blue Shea.
Evening, council members. Ladies and gentlemen, let's bow our heads. Lord God in heaven, we thank you for being the mighty God that you are. Lord, we thank you for this place that we can call home. We ask that you bless our endeavors. We ask that you bless the conversation that takes place in this meeting tonight. It is our prayer that we seek your wisdom and your understanding and your guidance. We give you all the glory and the honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Madam Clerk, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
There are no revisions tonight.
I don't believe we have any presentations or proclamations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we do not have any appeal hearings or public hearings?
No, we do not.
So we'll go to consent calendar, C1 listed on the agenda, C1 through C7. Are there any of the items listed on the consent calendar or any item that any council member would like to take from that for discussion?
I just want to make sure that I don't have a conflict for the Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority one.
That is item C7, and I have reviewed the contract. There is absolutely no financial implication that could cause any conflict. Therefore, I do not believe you have any conflict, and you can participate.
Thank you. Proceed.
If there are no questions, why the council members, the chair's lady for motion?
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
We are now on item D, D1, written communications. And this item is from Christian Gunther, a resolution of the city council of the city Victorville approving the application for grant funding from the Kaiser Permanente Community Benefit Grants Program and two, approving the acceptance of said grant funds for the Healthy Victorville's Fitness in the Park project. Any questions of staff? If not, promotion?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item two, resolution number 14-015, a resolution of the city council of the city Victorville approving the acceptance of California Endowment Funds Allocation for Healthy Victorville's Fitness in the Park project.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item three, under written communications. This is submitted by John McGlade, Director of Public Works, City Council Policy CP-95-1. This is an item that there was a couple of questions on from a member of the council. Before I paraphrase any one of you, are there any questions of the council members?
Mayor, I was a little confused with some of the lingo in the proposal, and I was particularly interested in the standardization issue. I'm not quite clear as to exactly what standardization is and why it's unachievable, and maybe a little amplification would help, Sean. I guess standardization is a good thing?
Yes, we believe that would be a good thing.
What is it exactly?
If you can imagine having the same brand of vehicle, the mechanics are familiar with it, the parts that would, the spare parts that would be kept would be much smaller than if you have a diverse fleet, the training, the tooling that they use. It would all be more standardized than if you have a variety of vehicles in the fleet.
So all Fords versus all GMC?
Yes. I mean, standardization would be along those lines. There's going to be exceptions because there's going to be certain pieces of equipment that are going to be, you know, fairly unique.
And if we standardize, that means whoever we pick, say we picked Ford, that means the local Ford dealer would be able to participate, but the others would be out. Is that why it's unachievable?
By standardizing, we're basically saying only one dealer would really be able to compete for that business. And that is contrary to what the policy indicates that we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be giving, affording the, all of the dealers in the Victor Valley the opportunity to bid on the solicitation that the city would have for replacement of vehicles.
When it comes to buying the kind of trucks we're inclined to buy, we wouldn't standardize with all Ford one year and all GM the next year and...
That would not make sense. If we're going to do it, it's going to be a multi-year decision, not to say that after three, four years, we wouldn't then take a fresh look at the standardization and see how it works. Just to make the point, the staff, the mechanics working in the shop, working on these vehicles, we listen to them to hear what they're saying. And, you know, the state solicitation for fleet purchases has selected the Fords. And, you know, the mechanics have the experience of working with all of the other different types of vehicles, and they're certainly indicating that they would be in favor of standardizing with Ford at this point in time.
What do you think is the cost or the cost of the inefficiency of having different vehicles that mechanics have to work on? I mean, do any way to even stab at that cost?
I don't know where to start on that, quite honestly. I mean, it's, if you take into account accumulatively all of the benefits of, you know, the training, the diagnostics that are needed, the tools, the special tools, if you have to have that for six, seven different types of vehicles as opposed to focusing on just having one, all I can say is it's very noticeable.
That is what every auto repair shop in the city and probably in the country does. Well, not all, but most.
Major companies try to standardize to save the costs.
No, no. What I'm saying is, I go to a shop, and I'm sure they work on 30 different types of cars.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So this isn't an uncommon sort of problem. I'm trying to figure out whether there's, whether the cost of doing this is going to be worth the benefit.
Understood. But to the point again is that you have major companies, and they try and standardize their fleets as opposed to, you know, having low bid. One time it's a Chevy, another time it's a Ford, another time it's Dodge, and they've got just such a variety of vehicles that they have to maintain.
I have a question. And I understand that the bidding requirements of a governmental entity, because we're dealing with taxpayers' funds as opposed to private companies. But I have read where some private companies who are bidding for vehicles require, along with the purchase, a continuing maintenance agreement with the entity or someone so that they don't have to worry about the mechanic's fleet. They don't have a shop. They don't have mechanics. They have vehicles that are purchased, something goes wrong, that's covered as part of the overall bidding procedure where the maintenance is handled by someone else. Have we ever considered that?
I think, as I think about it, the variety of equipment that we have, it's not just vehicles, it's equipment. It's not just small equipment, it's large equipment. There's always going to, the city's always going to have a need for fleet maintenance anyway. If all we had was just, you know, 20, 25 cars for moving people around, that certainly would make a whole lot of sense to have somebody off-site service them as, you know, as part of the contract to purchase. It's something that we could look into, but it doesn't shut down the yard, the service requirements that we have for other pieces of equipment.
I know that staff is trying to get the best bang for the buck, and I appreciate that. We were also cognizant a few years ago when we were bidding vehicles, that when the city was bidding vehicles, that we were having dealers from not only out of the city, but sometimes out of the county, that were receiving the low bids. And then there was the consideration that if something happens to the vehicle, the towing or the transportation of that vehicle back over a period of time might result in a higher overall cost. And there was a meeting with the dealers at that time. I have no idea what came out of that meeting, but I believe the staff then submitted a recommendation to the city council of local vendor preference, as I recall. And is, if we change the policy so that we try to have all the equipment the same, would that local vendor preference still be in effect?
Yes, it caps out at $1,000 difference between the local and the outside of the area.
And in reading this, it's not, it's, the action, the council isn't adopting new policy, but to authorize, consider amending the city council policy CP-95-1 to address conflicting requirements. I assume then that staff would put together, the proposal would come back at another council meeting?
There's four alternatives in the staff report, and, you know, we'd kind of like to write some.
Okay. I want to read those then. "The local dealer solicitation requirement is applicable only in cases where standardization is not a viable consideration. In order to address this in congruity, there are several possible policy modification options." And this is what they're asking of the council, number one. "Stipulate that the local dealer solicitation requirement is only applicable in cases where fleet standardization is not being considered. Two, stipulate that in cases where fleet standardization prevails, the local dealer solicitation preference will be followed by for local dealers, for the chosen manufacturer. Three, remove the local dealer solicitation requirement. Four, remove the fleet standardization requirement." What are you recommending?
I think our preference would be for the standardization and then give the opportunity to the local dealer.
I think I am confused. When you say standardization, do you already have a model in mind or a brand?
Yes, yes.
Ford?
Yes. I mean, we've been looking at the...
Who is the dealer?
Sunland Ford.
I feel like, I feel like we're not being fair to the rest of the vendors, but I see your point.
That's...
I see your point in having all these different vehicles and the difficulty it is to, because we have mechanics at VWA, and they would all love to just work on, you know, one type of pump, you know, rather than a zillion types of pumps. And we have that option of just buying that. So, I mean, do you have any statistics where it shows that, you know, this is cost efficient?
I'm not just sure that we have statistics. I mean, all of the different companies that are out there that try and standardize, you know, that's what we look at.
Maybe like other cities of why they do it and when they did it, it show in their budget that the costs went down, you know, for maintenance?
Yeah, we could certainly do a survey and find out what other cities are doing, yes.
I think I would feel more comfortable with that because I feel like we're just, we're just picking favorites here, you know? I mean, why Ford over Chevy, you know? I mean...
When you listen to the mechanics and you listen to the horror stories of some of the problems that they've had with other brands, and it'll change over time, you know? Ford might be tops today, and then it's Chevy.
One of the thoughts I'm having, I don't know if it's a valid thought, is that if we standardize to one brand, have we then kind of boxed ourselves in a corner? Did it make more sense to standardize to two, say GM and Ford? And be able to handle either one? Do we gain anything by doing that? Or do we gain enough so that we're not working on Mercedes trucks or, you know, other stuff? I don't know.
It's a difficult question. I mean, it really is. I...
Well, I happen to know from experience, I did work for a company that had a large fleet, and they did the same thing. They went, I won't even mention what model, you know, but it was cost effective. They saved a lot of money, and the mechanics were very pleased. They didn't have to keep replacing all kinds of different tools and things that they needed. So that was a great savings. I understand what you're saying.
But it does, it narrows it down to one brand. Maybe, I mean, if you go into two, you still have training, you know, for two different vehicle brands and...
These products do change over time, too. There was a time when GM was producing a pretty lousy product. That's changed in the last few years. I'm not promoting GM. I'm not doing that, but...
No, and we're recognizing that, you know, it's possible that in three or four years, we would do a fresh analysis and find out if there is a better product than the Ford out there.
Question for you, Sean. Remember when I came on the council, there was a large parking lot out here, and we had an inordinate amount of city vehicles just parked, doing absolutely nothing. You know, I'm kind of with some of the other council members up here as far as maybe, I mean, are we looking to purchase a lot of vehicles all of a sudden? One. And then, two, what about our existing fleet inventory? And why would we be looking to purchase vehicles? Because, again, my question is, did we sell off all those vehicles that I remember seeing? Or are they still within our fleet and parked at some yard out in Baldi Mesa? Where are all those vehicles that we had that were not being used?
I wasn't in charge of Public Works at the time.
I know that.
But I believe those were, many, many of them were leased, and so they were turned back in again.
Those were turned back in early, about 46 vehicles, I think, we turned in early. Forty-four or 46, I should remember.
Yeah. And then the other part of your question, time goes on, the vehicles, the miles increase on them, they start to wear out.
The first part of your question obviously helps answer the second part. I just, obviously, there were a lot of vehicles, and glad to hear that we don't have them anymore.
We don't have them anymore. Necessarily a large purchase coming up, but Mr. McGlade had indicated to me that there was some needs of at least a few vehicles. And I said, let's get the purchasing issue settled before we come forward with an item because, because of the local dealers and the desire on the part of the council to solicit from the local dealers, vehicle purchases have been some of the most controversial purchases we've made over the last 10 years. It's kind of strange how, no matter which path you choose, you end up facing intense criticism because you didn't choose that one or you didn't choose this one.
Yeah, I think there's 11 vehicles that need to be replaced. And, you know, you get an assessment from the mechanics that basically say, you're putting so much money into this, you'd be better off, you know, surplusing it and purchasing a new vehicle.
When we talk about this fleet, how many are heavy vehicles? How many of them are medium-sized pickups? How many are cars?
Of the 11?
Of our whole fleet?
Oh, I don't have those numbers.
Because we've got to standardize the whole fleet to really achieve standardization, right?
No, not the whole fleet. The heavy vehicles, you really can't standardize because they're too specialized.
They just are what they are.
It's just more the common pickup trucks and sedans.
Yeah, and the next item on the agenda is dump trucks, and they're not Fords, you know?
And on those vehicles, it doesn't make any difference if you're going to compress natural gas or not? All the vendors can provide those. I noticed the garbage company recently went to C and G over the diesel or the gas. Have they adopted a policy on that?
I think that's more in the way of the equipment. We have street sweepers that are compressed natural gas, but we're not proposing any of the vehicles in the current purchasing to be compressed natural gas. That's not a bad thing to look at because there is, the city has two, and we're working on getting a third filling station using compressed natural gas.
In what case would option number one be implemented, either Sean or Doug?
Essentially, option number one, I think, is what Sean's recommending here to where if it's a vehicle that's not a standardized vehicle, then you would use the local vendors as to the extent possible. But in the event that it was, say, a standard pickup truck, something that isn't in the standardization program, then you would not, you would ignore that piece of the current policy.
But I mean, we're, in what cases would we be purchasing something that wouldn't be standardized? Do we have an example of that?
That would be standardized?
That would not be standardized.
Is it easier to list the standard vehicles or easier to list the ones that aren't? Dump trucks.
Yeah, well, the dump trucks. You're starting to get up into equipment. If you're, we're talking about a vehicle, let's say, the bucket truck. The last purchase we did was two bucket trucks. And, you know, the chassis that it sits on might be a Ford or a GMC or whatever. But the equipment that is built into that is so specialized that it's not something you're going to have a local dealership. And so it may not be standardized, in other words.
Well, Sean, let me rephrase the question, maybe. I think this might get to the point, is if the council were to opt for number one, which I think is the recommendation, that we standardize where possible, and if it's not a standardization, then you would utilize the local vendors to the extent possible, at what point would local dealers have an opportunity to bid on a vehicle?
I mean, they're always going to have the ability to bid on it if it is a vehicle that they can actually get their hands on. There are some vehicles that Ford may be able to supply to meet the specification that Chevy cannot. And by the specification, they may not be able to bid on it.
No, but if you standardize to Ford, when would the Chevy or GMC or Toyota potentially dealer have any opportunity to bid?
It's only when we would relook at the standardization using Ford, three, four, or five years.
Very little, if at all.
Doesn't make any sense to bid that frequently.
No, you lose the advantage of standardizing.
No advantage, yeah.
All of the advantages of standardizing would be very short-lived.
And when you talk about the vehicles that are not, that would not be standardized, you're talking about things that local dealers probably wouldn't be the purveyor on anyway, dump trucks.
Yes, there would be that gray area like the bucket truck. You might be able to get the local dealer bidding on the chassis, but there is a company that has to equip it with the specialized equipment.
The Chevrolet dealer has perhaps a larger commercial vehicle inventory, it seems, than some of the other dealers. You drive along the freeway, you see some pretty large trucks out there that could potentially bid into some of these larger equipment-type purchases.
Right, but if it, even if they don't have it in the inventory, they can still acquire it.
Right.
Being a dealer.
Well, I'm a little confused on what you're looking for. I thought standardization was a part of the policy that the city council already adopted. And the Public Works Department would make that determination, and where it didn't work, then you went to open bidding. What is it you're changing?
The policy also says that we must hand-carry the bid to every dealer in the Victor Valley.
Hand-carry?
Hand-carry.
Well, no, that's...
No.
Well, whether you hand-carry it or mail it, the point is you're letting every dealer in the valley bid. When you're trying to accomplish standardization, it conflicts, it's internally contradictory.
It's offensive to walk into the Chevy dealer and hand them a vehicle purchase for a Ford.
Yeah. Oh, I see what, yeah, can a Chevy dealer, I suppose a Chevy dealer could find a Ford and sell it to it.
Yeah, theoretically, yeah, but they don't, it doesn't make them very happy.
Well, I... Are there any questions specifically as to staff, what needs to be changed on the current policy? The hand-delivering needs to be changed. It needs to be stricken. Fleet standardization, as I understand it, needs to be approved, strengthened, stated by the council?
There's two conflicting issues. I think what we're recommending is that we do the standardization, but it is futile then. The other part of the policy that indicates that we have to hand-carry the bid, and it's not the hand-carrying, but, you know, give all of the local dealers an opportunity to bid on boards.
The question to the council, are you agree, is this council in agreement to adopt policy for standardization?
I'm not comfortable. I think this staff rec maybe needs to be rewritten, and, I mean, if it's an improvement or amendment to the policy, I would rather it say that than standardization. I mean, is it an amendment to the policy?
It would be.
What we're asking for is direction on how to amend the policy, because right now the policy contradicts itself. It says we should standardize, but it also says we must... It says we should standardize, but it also says we must invite bids from all the dealers. So, really, the bottom-line question for the council tonight is...
Three and four.
Which would, which should we lean towards? It really is more three and four.
Either we remove standardization or we remove the dealer solicitation.
Correct. Correct. It really is a question of standardization. Do you want to standardize to a single make of vehicle? We believe it will save costs, we can't quantify those costs. I think Councilmember Garcia has at least some anecdotal evidence that there are savings there, and I think we're all of the understanding that we can see why there would be savings, don't know how much that would be, but that savings comes at the expense of your other dealers not having an opportunity to bid on vehicles.
Yeah, and also, why would we pick Ford over Chevy or GM or whatever else is out there? That's, I think that's really what I'm struggling with, is that, you know, it's a fancy word, standardization, but to me, it's like, it almost seems like favoritism. I mean, I'm just not comfortable with the standardization. I just, I won't vote for that part of it.
Well, and I think, you know, the other thing that we grapple with here, if we're Apple Valley or Sperry or Atlanta, we don't have auto dealers within our jurisdiction, so it might be easier to politically standardize, but we've got auto dealers in Victorville. They contribute a tremendous amount to our economic base, the sales tax dollars that come in that fund police and fire. You know, so I have a hard time taking out that local dealer solicitation requirement as well, just for that reason. So, I can understand where staff's at, going, "Well, what do you want us to do? One or the other?" You know, I don't know that there's an easy answer to that question. I personally could not vote for removing local dealer solicitation requirement.
Which would be standardization.
Right.
I agree that the hand-delivery should be taken out, but notification, however, we bid a lot of things, we spend a lot of taxpayer dollars. I don't know how we notify all the vendors, whether it's by legal ad or notification, but when we're buying vehicles, it should be done the same way, whatever that is. Secondly, we have two individuals that have a problem in removing the local dealership solicitation. You now have three individuals that have a problem with that. We have dealers, we're support, we have the dealers that we're working closely with. We encourage them to be here. Over the years, we have done a lot because of the sales tax and the benefit we receive to keep them here. And so when we buy, spend taxpayers' money on vehicles as best as we possibly can, they should all have the opportunity to bid on that piece of equipment.
Well, my comments were just, you know, to phrase that, yes, we could save money. However, I'm not in favor of excluding anyone, so as far as that goes, I would not have the other dealerships.
I think we have our direction.
You have direction, and there's no need to take an action. We'll refer this back to the city manager. Is that acceptable? We will do that. I'm not president with a pen, or whatever he uses, but I think it's acceptable for the council to do that. And then this item will come back. Next item, item number four. Honorable City Council Award, National Auto Fleet Group, the piggyback purchase of two 2015 Kenworth T-300 Series conventional cabs with 15-foot dump body in the amount of $237,000. $37.24, wow, $115,000 each. Under the National Joint Powers Alliance Contract Number 102811, and as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2013-14 Capital Improvement Budget, and these are, there's just three vehicles total, is that correct? Where are we getting those from? Do I see that?
Waiting for my item to come up here.
Not the Toyota dealer, I would think.
No, those are not the Toyota dealer.
But where are they from? Who bid?
Mr. Mayor, just a question. Are our mechanics trained to work on these vehicles? Or do we use the manufacturer's mechanics? That's a serious question, I'm not being...
Mr. McGlade, if you can answer that, or if you'd like Mr. Matthews to come up and answer that, perhaps both of those questions. Where would these come from, and to what extent can our mechanics work on these versus the need for someone else? Doug Matthews, the Assistant Director of Public Works, is on his way to the podium to answer those two questions.
We're on the subject.
National Auto Fleet Group, whoever that is.
Yeah, the only vehicles they don't work on are vehicles usually under warranty, or ones that we don't have that would take a very expensive piece of equipment, and we only have one or two vehicles of that nature. Other than that, if we have the equipment, they're qualified to work on them.
And Doug, do you know National Auto Fleet Group, where they're located at?
I don't know where they're located, but it's a state contract, it's approved to be able to purchase through them. And again, these are specialty vehicles that we get a good price on it. They wouldn't come from a local dealer.
So this is out of the state contract? Were we buying under their contract?
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
Okay.
State negotiated.
State negotiated.
National fleet negotiated, but, yeah.
I see a Watsonville, California, address on the solicitation response.
Watsonville. Doug, just, you said something that caught my attention. You said, "Our mechanics don't work on vehicles under warranty?"
If they're covered under warranty, no, we wouldn't work on them. We would send them to the dealer to get them done. We don't want to spend our money when they're covered.
Technically, new vehicles for a period of at least three years, most cases, five years, 100,000 miles now, are under warranty.
I'm not sure the vehicles, the trucks we're buying cover everything, oil changes, brakes, and everything like that. They usually cover drivetrain, those type items, big, big ticket.
All right, just interesting point you brought up.
And actually, our mechanics, I wasn't sure about these vehicles, but our mechanics, back when we had our own fire department, our mechanics worked on the fire trucks. They work on the motorcycles that the sheriff's department rides, their motors.
Yeah, dump trucks, graders, all key stuff at the airport, anything like that, they're qualified to work on it all.
Well, if you, if you have an opportunity, councilmembers, sometime have the city manager take you to the garage, you're going to be amazed at the amount of equipment that we have, different equipment, the amount of work that the mechanics do. I'm sure they're wanting to make it easier, because many, many times, they're behind. We understand that. And in this particular case here, though, we need to move on if there's any questions. I don't think there's any further questions. This is a big-ticket item here. It's, it's a, the project budget was $135,000, project balance is $19,000. It's shown on the bottom where the extra money's coming from. If there are no objections to purchase this equipment, Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Doug, thank you for your comments. Our next item, item number five, professional services agreement. Award in agreement to Water Systems Consulting, Inc., WSC, for on-call engineering services for water feasibility studies, water supply assessments, and general water planning assistance in the amount of $66,775, and approve an additional appropriation of $48,452.
I have a question on here. It says, although the RFP was downloaded from the city's website by various firms, and the district extended the due date for two weeks, only one proposal had been received. Did staff send out or reach out to any of these firms to solicit the proposal? And how do we know it was downloaded?
Our IT staff can track whether or not it was downloaded. Mr. McGlade, can you answer the other part of the question as to what type of outreach we did?
Yes, I mean, the water model was put together by a company called Corolo, and they were directly notified of this, but for whatever reason, we don't understand why they chose not to submit.
Is Corolo?
Well, that was the company that built the model.
Uh-huh.
But, you know, we put it on the website, but as far as reaching out specifically to one company, we contacted Corolo to make sure that they were aware of it.
Just one company you contacted?
I don't know if that was the only one, but I know of that one.
Because normally, we have a vendor list when we put out an RFP, so we contact a list of vendors, and there's, you know, there could be 10, there could be 50, and we send them the email, the link, and notify them. I just want to make sure that staff is making the effort, because now we're at, being asked to give another $45,000. If staff makes more of an effort, maybe we could get more competitive bids, and we could stay within the budget.
That's why we extended it for two weeks.
I know, but I think if, I mean, I mean, how many people, you know, go to every city website, that's what I'm saying, and look for these RFPs? If we're putting it in the newspapers, what are we doing? What kind of effort? I just want to make sure staff is doing an appropriate level of effort, so that we're not making additional appropriations.
Yeah, we certainly advertise it. As far as it being on the website, that's additional to what the law requires. I know that we specifically contacted Corolo. We could have, I don't know, I would need to check with staff to find out if we directly notified other companies. I believe we did, but I don't want to say it, because I don't know that for a fact.
We maintain a bid list as well, a vendor list as well, for any type of a project. Anybody who has a skill set in that area, they would be notified of anything that they would be qualified to bid on. I don't know how many are on that list that would have been notified based on this one solicitation, but I can tell you that anybody that was on the list for this type of a project would have been contacted directly and invited to bid.
My recollection from this is that it's not a very long list.
No.
Of qualified...
No, the particular expertise and the software that's used for the computer modeling kind of restricts the number of companies that would be capable of providing the services.
Are we looking at a particular deadline for this award?
There's nothing impending, if that's what you're asking, if...
I had read in the staff report, and I'm looking for it, but that several, it was worded in such a way that several firms had downloaded, even though we only got one firm. And that's, that makes it fine if we did that. I agree with the other comments that we certainly would have had a vendor's list, but if different people had the opportunity and were aware, downloaded, and chose not to bid, that's, I think staff has done everything that they could do or expect to do.
Yes.
On the other hand, if somehow the word didn't get out, and I don't know that, it would be maybe premature. That's why it was the two questions. If we are confident that the word was there, simply didn't get the bidders to choose, or the, number two, or they didn't get the word, but we don't have any pending deadline, that's kind of the different, two questions I'm asking.
Well, there was a deadline to submit the proposal. We extended it two weeks, and we had seven people download the information from the Internet. I feel confident that we gave every opportunity to companies that wanted to submit a bid.
All right. Other questions from councilmembers? No further questions of staff? Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just as a comment, if staff ever believes that because we only have one bid, or only one or two bids, or if all of the bids, if we believe that they are higher than what they should be, we've, on a number of occasions, brought an item to the council to reject all the bids and rebid an item.
That's correct, thank you.
We have that flexibility as well, should we believe that there's a better price out there.
The next item, agenda item number six, is a recommendation from the staff that the successor agency, Vehicle redevelopment agency, approved the attached amendment number two, in the amount not to exceed $55,800 to the general service provider standard agreement between Wilson and Company to oversee emergency repairs for the agency's railroad track. And that's the one at Bear Valley Road going northerly, paralleling the private railroad company for our agencies that are using it for delivery and shipping. Any questions of staff? If not, motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McAcoran.
Item number seven is the...
Councilmember Vias, may I get a word from you? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number seven, ratification of amendment number one to standard sublease agreement for portions of Building 717 by and between Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, SCLA, and the Boeing Company. Additional income. Good show, staff.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcoran, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number eight, ratification of standard lease agreement for Building 744 by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, SCLA, and Leading Edge Aviation. Again, it's an approval of additional revenue, at least ratifying this lease agreement for additional revenue.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia.
Number nine, request for professional services agreement, the recommendation that the city council authorize execution of a standard professional services contract with Idea Hall, and incorporate in the scope of work described below. Any questions of the staff in regard to this marketing, proposed marketing program?
Yeah, I have some questions. Mostly concerns that, I mean, we have an agreement with Sterling, we absorb the RDA staff when we don't have RDA, and why wasn't this not budgeted? Why hasn't it gone to an RFP? And if possible, can we do a PIO slash marketing combo position? And then when we have, when we have, like, Bradco Company, I mean, don't they go out and look for people to come into SCLA, and then we pay them commission for doing a good job? I feel like we're paying for the same position we've already paid a bunch of people to be doing it.
There's, if I might...
Okay, go ahead.
There's a lot of elements to marketing altogether, and a lot of those that you speak of, raising the attention to, say, a brokerage commission, you know, that, for example, is something much different than what we're trying to accomplish in this transaction. And what we're trying to accomplish in this transaction more so has to do with developing and updating a marketing program, largely because we haven't had the funds nor the staff to properly attend to the marketing for the last three or four years. And that's marketing what we're trying to accomplish as a city, as opposed to a specialized interest that perhaps a broker might have in a particular building. So, this item more so is focused upon what we see as economic development going forward in marketing our interests, largely it had relied on redevelopment and focusing attention to industry in our redevelopment project areas. We've used redevelopment money to do that. And of course, you know, the goal and the direct objective was to increase tax increment in those project areas that would also, at the same time, allow for the creation of monies to build infrastructure and create jobs. That funding source has gone, so we've had to reshape and rethink how we want to continue to grow and attract industry and jobs. And really, what we're intending to do going forward, starting with this program, and it started late last year when we adopted the "Made in Victorville" campaign, is look at what resources we have left. Certainly, SCLA is one of the biggest resources, and it has a national audience, and even an international audience that it needs to create awareness and branding to, something that not necessarily we can rely on a local brokerage firm to accomplish for us. And that's largely also because there's a much greater targeted audience. You know, we're looking to attract and get the attention of site-selection consultants, corporate real estate executives, those are actual real estate professionals that work directly for, say, the Dr. Peppers of the world, along with corporate real estate brokerage firms. So there's a much diverse audience out there that not necessarily we can rely on our local brokerage... brokerage community to do for us, because we don't necessarily know if they're going to carry our exact message. And our exact message is going to be largely promoting things like SCLA, promoting things that are municipal utilities. You know, one of what we see largely going forward is collectively, we will succeed from an economic development perspective if we start maximizing the use of, say, our electricity, or Vemus, as an example. Right now, Vemus largely is dependent upon the success of SCLA, and SCLA is largely dependent upon the success of Vemus. Same goes with gas, and a lot goes as it relates to SCLA and the city's investment in wastewater. There's a lot of elements there that not necessarily directly correlate to, say, a real estate broker's interest in a particular piece of property, but instead, you know, our goal is to market and create the awareness for our programs as to why Victorville is a more cost-effective location to do business. So, what we're trying to accomplish is much bigger on a much more national and even international scene, if that's possible.
So, let me break this down. So, what we pay Sterling, it's not in their contract to do that?
We actually don't pay Sterling anything right now. We haven't in the last three, four, or five years.
Okay, so they're not even, we're not paying them nothing?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so, the RDA staff that we absorbed?
That was into different areas, a lot of the airport, some in finance as well. Some of those staff have left as well, to be honest.
Okay, so, why was this position not budgeted?
This is actually to retain a professional consultant.
I know, I'm sorry, not position, but why was this item not budgeted?
We actually intended to bring it as a part of the mid-year. We actually pulled it out because we wanted to refine the scope and make sure we understood exactly what we were going to be getting, what our game plan was going to be for the next fiscal year. We also needed to make sure we totally understood that we can make the money work.
Is this an ongoing annual contract, or just a one-time thing?
Well, right now, the item...
Two months and one year. Two, three, and then all next year.
Correct. The appropriation that we're requesting is to get an amount of work done through this fiscal year. We certainly expect something going, continuing to exist, and we'll deal with that as a part of the ongoing budgeting process. But for example, what we're focused on right now is refreshing a lot of our tools. A website is probably the most classic example, but there's also other basic things like brochures. We need to refresh the tools that we have to make them more relevant, more fresh, more speaking to today's environment. Classic example that I'm experiencing right now, which is actually making it a little challenging for me when I go out to the industry. I was at Speed News Convention a couple of weeks ago, and of course, you know, one of the calls to action, when you're talking to these people, and you give them the business card, or you give them the flyer, or you give them your material, is driving them back to, say, a website that's old, antiquated, and doesn't have the most relevant information today. So, it's actually making our efforts not as productive as it could be, because very typically, after we meet these people, if there's interest or inquiry, they're going to drive back to your portals. Where can they get the information? How can they learn more? And if we don't have it modernized, or correct, or even accurate, it makes it even more difficult for us to be successful trying to get that second meeting, or that second discussion.
And the largest part of this ought to be accomplished, I would think, in the next year.
Well, this part, we're certainly expecting before this fiscal year. Our consultant is ready. Certainly, what we're expecting is if we can achieve this milestone of getting these tools in place, then we'll go on the national campaign of getting some editorial opportunities, creating the larger awareness. One of the things that we're a little bit sensitive about, and we actually pulled back a little bit in some of the negotiation, is we pulled back some of that going out to the market right away, because we didn't necessarily want to find ourselves potentially being successful, going to the market saying, hey, go to VictorvilleCity.com, and then find out we're not ready to receive that attention and that audience. So, the goal is to focus on those tools for this fiscal year, so that to be as productive as we possibly can when the fiscal starts, then go into the press and the national press, the editorial, the storytelling campaign, basically.
I have a couple of questions. Either to Keith or Doug, who has, or what agency has been doing this work in the past?
Locally for us, it's been largely the Redevelopment Agency. And when I say that, the Redevelopment Agency has taken the larger collective marketing to industrial audiences and even commercial audiences for the city. SCLA had done some, and SCLA had done some specific to the on-airport activity, but it relied on Sterling through the budgeting process fairly heavily, for Sterling to do marketing of the off-airports, or the vertical opportunities, whether it's warehouse distribution opportunities, or manufacturing opportunities. We've cut back Sterling, I think it was in 2009 or 2010, I think it was 2009, when we cut the budget, basically stripping them of any marketing funds to go out and do that off-airport. And because of the funding constraints collectively and the elimination of redevelopment, the redevelopment program went away, so there was very limited marketing being done by the administration of the airport, and that's kind of where we're at right now.
And we've talked a couple of times about the fact that with the elimination of RDAs and tax increment, that ultimately, the city would need to begin to market itself. So, potentially, those funds for marketing would be competing with police, fire, parks and recreation. What this offers is an opportunity to use your utilities for some of that forward marketing, to try to attract those new businesses to come to town, because obviously, to the extent Vemus is successful at helping you attract a new business, the revenues for Vemus are going to go up. Same with the water district, with sanitary sewer system, and potentially with the gas system as well. So, that's why the funding source is those four functions, SCLA being the fourth.
We, staff, most of the staff, have discussed in the past that if a news media calls requesting information regarding the city, the city activity, that it's best to refer them directly to the department that's responsible for doing the work and the department head, because they can answer that question much better than anyone else. And at one time, when the city of Victorville employed a public relations individual, they had very broad job, and mostly for the city as a whole, even at that time, it was recognized that if there were specific questions to a department, that they went directly to that department. In reading this, it seems to grant this individual some broad, I don't know if you would call it authority, to have meetings with the media and to discuss different things with the That's not acceptable to me. This council is very busy trying to promote the city. We also say if you want to have a question answered, go directly to the department head. We hired the city manager. And I can understand wanting to promote different areas of the city, but it seems when you read this, it is stipulating that a lot of the things that should be controlled by the manager and/or the council is giving away to a contract. And the second thing that's occurring is that if you really read this very carefully, we're really talking about bringing businesses and most of the emphasis on SCLA in the base. So, I have real mixed feelings about this.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just to clarify, this is not intended to usurp the local press responsibilities. When we talk about press opportunities in this, this is more press-related to industrial, I'm sorry, just trade publications in general. So, for example, Speed News is a Penton-owned publication. They would be going to the expansion managements of the world, the site selection managements of the world, the trade associations that we typically are aware of and rely on to get our message to. It's not intended to be the spokesperson for the city of Victorville with the Daily Press, or the San Bernardino Sun for local issues. Those would still retain in our authority, it'd be under Doug's authority, or in his absence, undermined, and certainly rely on the department as to continue that. So, if it's written that way or interpreted that way, that's not what it's intended to mean.
Okay, well, maybe because I didn't study it closely enough. And then the other concern that I had, which goes to the original question, we had a staff in redevelopment, we kept the staff, we were doing it in-house, but now we can't do it, but we kept the staff. I didn't follow that logic either. Being done in-house, we still have the same people. Why can't they do it?
We have not kept all the staff. In fact, there was one position that was a key position. We'd actually evolved over the years of marketing where we relied on a consultant, and because we felt we got more proficient with the growing team that we had, we internalized it. We internalized it headed up by a position that I believe was called on the org chart, Business Development Manager, high-profile type position, that was responsible for leading a lot of that marketing work for us, going out to the shows, creating the awareness, a lot of similar things that's here. That position is no longer with us, as eventual result of the downsizing, and then I believe that employee took on a position elsewhere. Also, we've retracted in some of the other support staff that are no longer with us. Right now, we're down to, in terms of marketing staff, we're down to two people really, if you don't include myself. But the one person that would be a lead has been on medical for over a year, and we're actually very excited, because she's going to be coming back probably in three or four months. But we also have an intern, a college intern, that's working with us, so we just don't have those same human resources that we once did.
And the staff that we kept wasn't in their same positions. They were absorbed into other vacant positions that we had needs that were budgeted positions. So, we didn't keep them on, they aren't doing the same things, to the extent that the ones that did stick around, they're doing different work, because we couldn't continue to pay them from RDA dollars.
When I had asked how much the absorption of the RDA staff was costing the city, I was given a number, one million a year.
We have a spreadsheet that we prepared back in, I think it was 2011, that shows the exact details of that. We can provide it to the whole council again, if you'd like. But I think the bulk of those dollars came from other funding sources, not from city funds.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I think there's a lot of discussion around a lot of different issues here, personnel-related, and to me, that's a whole different animal that if we need to tackle, we need to tackle. But the reality is, is I think that as a council, do we want to get back in the business of economic development? I know, for one, I would like to see us be attracting those types of corporations that would look to locate here in Victorville, whether it be SCLA, or Foxborough, or some other place within the city, that would create jobs for our local residents. This is nothing more than a means to that end, which we do not currently have implemented right now. So, I think, you know, using this firm, we've used them in the past to do similar work, bringing them on, it's only for a couple of months in this fiscal year, the next fiscal year, if it doesn't produce any results, then we can revisit it and not do it any longer. But to think that we could just have staff internally try to figure this out and redo a website, redo all the branding material, we'd still have to have printed by someone anyway. At the end of the day, I think that, from a philosophical standpoint, does the council want to look at attracting corporations that will help us create jobs, or do we not? That is what is at the crux of this item that's before us. If the council doesn't want to be doing that, and doesn't think that the city should be doing that, then vote no against it. But in my opinion, what this does is it allows us to move back in that direction. We've been on hiatus for so many years due to all kinds of different issues and reasons, and I think it's time we get back to economic development.
Actually, I do want to get back to economic development, but I do have a problem with the way the staff rec is written. One is that it wasn't budgeted, and I still didn't understand why. And then I was told that it was going to, it was going to come before mid-year budget review, which I would have liked that better, because then I would have understood more where the money was coming from, rather than a 25% through Vemus, water, wastewater, and SCLA. I mean, what's the balance of those accounts? I mean, it doesn't show what their balance is, and, I mean, do we have expenditures coming out of there that are outstanding? It just seems like there wasn't a lot of thought put into it if it wasn't budgeted. And so, what happened? Why now?
A lot of that has to do with the timing of the ROPS, the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, that had dominated the staff's time, responding to the requirements of the state to put together all of those things. Now that those are pretty well set, and we're able to start looking at the long-range property management plan that we did a couple of months ago, we are also able to finally take a breath and start to look at how can we market the city? Just as Councilmember McAcoran mentioned, that really is the purpose of this. As far as whether or not we should have a public information officer as well, that is something that we're looking at possibly for a future budget. We, as part of the mid-year budget, if you go back to the first item, that was continued by the council, that's one of the positions that we had proposed at the time, with an intent that that person would then oversee something such as this contract. We pulled all of those personnel items out for a lot of different reasons that were discussed over, I think, three different meetings. So, but the need to market is still there. So, that's why we proposed it in this way. As Mr. Metzler indicated, this is essentially setting up the hard marketing tools for whomever is going to be marketing the city to go out and do that. Whether it's ultimately a consultant, or if we do end up hiring perhaps next year, someone like a public information officer, or a marketing person combination, they'll have the tools in place to get started with that work, once they're hired.
And why a professional services agreement? Why not an RFP?
There was actually an RFP done a couple of years ago. Keith, if you could get into that a little bit?
There was, and we actually, through VITA, had the town of Apple Valley take the lead, so effectively, we're piggybacking on that process. It was a process that, because it was done independently, and did go out and solicit to multiple companies, we were able to find the results of that, actually look through the proposals, revisit the proposals that were submitted, and negotiate from those. And that's really how we arrived at that. So, we felt, given the need, given the timing, and then certainly given the effort that had gone on in the past, that, you know, we satisfied certainly the municipal code for purchasing.
Do we have a policy for the threshold of a professional services agreement cost, not to exceed before we go to RFP? I mean, what, like VBWA, if it's under 5,000, we can do three quotes, or we can go professional services agreement under a certain amount? I mean, what's the city's policy?
Yeah, we have a very similar policy. I think it's 5,000. You can do three quotes. Anything above that, we do an RFP. In this case, we had done an RFP, or at least there was one that we could use that had been appropriately advertised.
And they officially won that RFP?
Yes, they did. Yeah, they were actually recommended to the VITA board, and the only reason the VITA board didn't award that contract was because there was uncertainty at the time about the redevelopment funds it was going to have to be able to do this. So, it actually pulled it, put it on hold, but it was recommended as the awarding firm.
So, I guess I'll ask Andre, is there any type of expiration date on that RFP?
Well, again, the RFP was done, I believe, for VITA, and I don't know that it would have an expiration date. This is being recommended based on the fact that they were successful in that RFP process.
We relied on that process, and then also relied on, we did get some revised bids from Idea Hall. We actually negotiated their prices down to at least be the same amount that was the recommended award amount at the VITA level. So, we actually used the old bids and actually used that in our favor to negotiate a better price than today's current pricing.
So, if we award this contract tonight, this agreement, and let's say, real estate firms bring in clients, do we still pay their commission too?
Well, if it's a real estate transaction, that's totally different. That has nothing to do with the marketing. That has more to do with a brokering service associated with either a lease or a sale of property. It's totally different than what we're trying to accomplish here.
But you're trying to accomplish bringing businesses in, right?
Right.
And so, if these real estate companies bring businesses in, they get it too? It's like a free-for-all? I mean, I guess I'm not understanding...
If a real estate broker represents a client, they get a commission. If a real estate broker represents the city, in that same transaction, they get a commission as well. The purpose of this isn't to necessarily attract a specific business to a specific parcel of land. It's simply to market, to generate interest that would then drive those companies potentially to come here. So, as a result of this contract...
But they would still have to go through a real estate person?
They wouldn't necessarily have to, they can come directly to the city.
And then there wouldn't be another commission?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, it would, in essence, almost cut out those... So it would, in essence, almost cut out those commissions if we're bringing them directly to us? That's what I'm getting at.
It could, but Idea Hall would not earn a commission.
There's a cost savings there.
Yeah, because in the case of on airport at SCLA, that's all done by us in-house. There's nobody else involved. So in those cases, if it were a Boeing of the world, so to speak, and you were bringing an agreement before this council, there's no commissions being paid on that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Boeing transaction, leading-edge transaction, those are all internal, so we fulfill all of those. There's also a lot of other acreage at the airport. One of the things that we're going to do with our master planning is rezone some uses out there to include some non-aeronautical where we can actually maximize some uses inside the fence line for non-aeronautical activities. Those would be examples where with a marketing program like this, if we're successful and the phone rings or we get the visits or the tours here in the city, that we would do those deals directly if something materials, materialized. So absolutely, we could save.
I think at this point in time, we've had all the questions answered. I would make a following request to council. Phase one is defined as March through June. Should be April through June. I mean, this is already, what, the 18th of March? And they can't be working because we didn't approve it. Secondly, then, if we do approve this, I recommend that it be changed. And secondly, we give them one year and do an evaluation so that we have at least 90 days' notice on whether or not we want to continue with this program. I do not want to wait until June 1 of next year and get a proposal and try to have everything understood at that time. I think a one-year lead time, a one-year time for evaluation is justified. And then if that goes fine, council can give direction to the staff to include it for another fiscal year. Anybody object to that? The chair's open with a motion and hopefully with those two amendments.
Okay, so you're saying one year instead of 14 months?
No, it says March through June. It should be April through June. But the approval then, the contract would contain the agreement that in one year, this would be put back on the agenda for devaluation of how successful they have been-
Oh, okay.
-to make a determination if we're going to continue or cancel June 30, June 30 of 2015.
And the motion would also include the ability for changes to be made by the city manager and city attorney to make them consistent with your prior comments, i.e., press releases should be received the prior approval of the-
Yes.
-city manager.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, there is still two weeks remaining in March. If it's approved tonight, they could start work literally tomorrow. If the council's okay with that, I mean, it seems foolish.
I'm willing to pay people that do work, but I'm not willing to pay a maritro act who works and not doing. The point is, is that this is written March through June, this is the 18th of March. They couldn't be working because it's not approved. If they are working, then they're foolish because it hasn't been approved by the council. They're not going to get paid for it.
But they're going to be billed and paid based on the work they do, right?
That's correct. We had actually intended to bring this to you one meeting prior, so apologize for that confusion.
That's all right.
We do want to get them started as soon as possible. There's one little detail that has to be worked out before they can physically start working, and that is that we need to roll the scope of services into our standard professional services contract, which they need to sign, get us the insurance certs, things like that. So there's some, a few days that probably have to elapse, but we would like to get them started as soon as possible.
Okay, I'm okay with that, but I just want to make sure that when they do come, when it does come back to the agenda for review, that what they've done, you know, if they've brought in business and if we've eliminated those commissions by bringing them directly to the city. I want to see a cost savings. I want to see that return of investment.
We can certainly make a list when it comes back in a year of any businesses that have come, you know, through means other than through a broker. I don't know that you would necessarily directly tie it to this contract, but certainly we can make that list and we can, we will, of course, not only a year from now, but also throughout the year, show you all the marketing materials that they developed for us as we roll out the Made in Victorville campaign.
Okay, I'm ready to vote.
All right. Chair's ready for a motion.
Motion by Mayor Proton McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 10, Causey Heating and Air Conditioning Construction Agreement Amendment 2 for Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning, HVAC Services. They have had the, we have an old rundown system. I questioned this quite extensively because I know that we've had problems out there before. This did go out, they talked to a lot of people, and this is to provide those services on an instant basis rather than having to go out each time when they have a major problem. So there's no further questions. Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Mayor Proton McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is item E, which is the public comment. I have a number of cards here for those individuals that want to address the council. This would be the time and place for the public to address the council. They also can fill out a card if you want to address, you haven't filled out a card. You have three minutes. The reason that we do that is because many individuals don't understand, they come up and ask questions and because it's not on the agenda, we do not give answers, we do not get involved in a dialogue. It's not an agenda item. If we did that, we would have people complaining that we're conducting business, it's not on the agenda, and therefore people who would have shown up had they known that subject was going to be discussed, didn't get notified. So it's the Brown Act, we have to comply with that. We very often will contact, have staff contact people at a later time. We also encourage anyone that have questions of the city, you can put it in writing and submit it to the mayor, the city manager, or the city council, and you will get those questions answered. The first card that I have, and I'll take it in the order that I received them, Barbara Adair regarding the Route 66 Historic Society.
My name is Barbara Adair, and as the mayor just said, I'm with the Victorville Old Town Route 66 Historic Society. And the Old Town businesses meet each month at Adelia's secretary office in Old Town, and they have all received the brochure stating the requirements for the code enforcement on signs and window printing. They are also aware of the JWF company, which has been hired to start the Upper Narrows Pipeline replacement next month. This includes putting the septic in on Seventh and C Streets, and in fact, the drilling has started just this last week. The business owners in Old Town feel this is very untimely code enforcement with the other disturbances in Old Town. Also, several feel the manner in which the code people in person have been very harassing. The Old Town Route 66 Historic Society has recently welcomed new businesses into the Old Town area, and more and more Route 66 visitors are coming and taking pictures and enjoying our Old Town in Victorville. Each business owner is willing to cooperate with what they can about the codes, but finances as new businesses should be taken into account. Also, we were told the traffic will be narrowed down to two lanes for the year of construction and adjustments for customers will have to be made. Our Historic Society is asking for a deferment of code and consideration from the city to help in this matter. In addition, also to allow special signs to go up showing the businesses are still open. I want to thank you in advance for your help that you'll give to Victorville Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Harry Perkins.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I work with a bunch of investors and we're investing probably under your D9 thing you guys were talking about. We look at the area and we're putting a lot of money into your city. We are right now renovating Circle Drive over by the library in that area. We've had a lot of trouble with, you know, people dumping stuff, vandalism and all that stuff. But with the help of the Victorville Police up here, things have gotten a lot better. There's been very, a lot of help. Code enforcement has been a lot of help. So we're going to be renovating that area through there. We also have other businesses up here. The trust I work for are putting a lot of money into your city. And we're, if you guys have ever heard of the P-King Restaurant, that's what we're starting to work on now. So we're trying to take part of the Old Town area and build it up and bring businesses back up here. So even keeping an eye on everything through there, and we do appreciate what the police have done too. That's been a big turnaround. The vandalism is way down. So we want to say that, you know, the city is growing. We see the market coming up out here, and we continue, we will continue to invest up here. But one of the main things is, as with all businesses, the city's working with the businesses. So far, what we're seeing is very good on our part. We just wanted to say thanks, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. The next card that I have is Jim Lindenberg.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today and just give you a little bit of information about me. I've been a resident of Victorville for 41 years, 20 years in the Air Force and 20 years as a small business owner. The purpose of my visit today is to inform you about the site ordinance enforcement, mainly temporary signage. As you're probably aware, code enforcement has been modifying or notifying businesses about violations of the ordinance to include vinyl banners, feather flags, poles, et cetera. Yes, I was notified of violations and took care of them. Three days after the code enforcement visit, I received a letter from my landlord with a letter from code enforcement and pamphlet notifying businesses of the upcoming inspections. The gist of the pamphlet was, quote, "Temporary signage is negatively affecting the image of the city." And another quote from the pamphlet says, "Money in Entrepreneur Magazine doesn't mention temporary signage is a benefit to increased business." I talked to George Duran, the author of the letter and code enforcement officer, just to make sure this is going to be a city-wide enforcement and not selective. I also asked if it would include auto dealers. His response was that he was told the Civic Center auto dealers are exempted because of an agreement with the RDA. I asked for a copy of the document and I was told the planning department had it. Well, you can see where this is going. You guessed it, the planning department doesn't have any such document, but wait, a revision is being drafted to exempt the Civic Center auto dealers. I asked Carol Lee Bates to check into these documents and that I would like to talk to the city manager. Carol Lee got back with me a couple of days later after talking to the development department and confirmed the dealers were exempt to some point by the RDA documents. I did a public records request for the supporting documents, and what I received was a current copy of the ordinance as it stands today, which has no exemptions, and it also contained a draft of the ordinance change to exempt Civic Center auto dealers. So the city clerk and me have been lied to, as there are no exemptions for anyone. These auto dealers are the worst offenders of temporary signage ordinance, along with Midway Appliance and the new gym in the old Costco building. These businesses are visible to over 150,000 people daily traveling on Interstate 15. I ask you to remember the two quotes earlier from the pamphlet about temporary signage negatively affecting the city image and being of no benefit to increased business. Put this in better perspective, their banners are the size of at least one freeway billboard and in some cases, two billboards. My banner that was in violation was the size of a car windshield. In closing-
Time is up, Mr. Lindenberg.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I know that we're going to be, we don't get involved in discussions, but in instances like this, I'll just say I know nothing about anyone being exempted. So staff, hope you took careful notes. I'd like to see a report back to the city council in regard to this issue. The next speaker, Barbara Powers.
I'd like to pass out some of the flyers we're going to have for our business, if Our Old Town Route 66 Historic Society, we had the ribbon cutting, Ryan McEckern came, we appreciate that. But we now have the new residents there at 15492, which is on your sheet there, Suite A, Seventh Street. It's in the Santa Fe Trading Complex there. It will be staffed to service high desert residents and tourists traveling through town, Old Town, showing the current points of interest in the Old Town and Route 66. The suite is full of historic pictures already. It's just loaded, wonderful, and it has brochures and postcards of the historic aspects of this area. We hope you and others will take time to come and enjoy our suite. Our nonprofit is also helping the new businesses in Old Town with their customer marketing. Each business is highlighted every month on Facebook, and they have monthly meetings sharing their business ideas and their concerns. Because of the needs, because of the needed septic work on Seventh and C, we're looking at the traffic rerouting that is natural to avoid the construction. This is important to us because in the past, our committee has asked the city for ways to slow down Seventh Street traffic, the one that goes to D downhill. And we're also looking for the possibilities to divert that traffic to another street. We've talked about that before to the city. And we want to bring back street parking for Old Town customers as a vision in the future. And they don't like to park in the alleys. And so tonight, we are asking for a city update for that federal financial status, which was holding everything up involving, that was involved when the street was widened. There's some financial, federal government thing. And we would like an update on that if we could, and we hope that we can vision a future return to the Old Town, street parking. It's not just for businesses, people, we've had many, many people talk, including Doug Robertson and some other people at our committee in the old days, and they really want to get us back to street parking. It's not, but I have here 14 businesses-
Ten seconds.
Okay, 14 businesses who would like the street parking, and I'll give it to her. Thank you for your help in this matter.
Those are all the cards that I have. Again, we don't, we can't try to address these, they're not on the agenda, but they don't fall on deaf ears. And as these come before the city council, we will either take them up or they go to the staff, but almost in every case, the individuals are notified, someone will get back to you. I have no other cards, I have no one else to speak to the council, and so we'll get back to reports from, so that I find the agenda. Report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three quick things. Number one, the issue of the auto dealers temporary signs is complicated. I'm actually still researching it and intend to get back to the owner of Lyndy T's as soon as I can get that completed. It's more than just the ordinance, and there is a difference in knowledge as far as how it's being applied. So I'm trying to get that sorted out and we'll get back to him as well as the council once I've completed that. Other announcements that I've got, number one is your staff, if you happen to come in on a Thursday in March, you may notice that some of your staff are wearing blue jeans. Normally, we don't allow them to wear blue jeans, but they came up with a fundraiser for the March of Dimes team that we have. For $5 for any given Thursday, a staff member can wear blue jeans. They get a little sticker that says March for Babies, and actually, they ran a discount for the entire month of March, for all four weeks, you could wear blue jeans for $15. So to date, we've raised about $700 for the March of Dimes. We're proud of that and it should go up as we get deeper into the month. Lastly, last Thursday, your senior staff met to go over the strategic planning items that are still remaining, and we had a very productive afternoon meeting. It lasted the entire afternoon. We went to a local business to get away and have a little bit of peace and quiet. So we are going to be coming back within the next- and quiet. So we are going to be coming back within the next probably two to three weeks to the council with an action plan for each of those six or seven items that were discussed as part of our strategic planning session. That will include not only action steps, but also a calendar as to when they would come back to the city council for individual discussion of those as may be necessary.
Thank you, Doug. Next is a report from council members. Councilmember Garcia, I'll start with you. Councilmember McEckern.
Yeah, just two things. Just to recognize, last night, we lost a developer that built a lot of homes in this community, a gentleman by the name of Ira Norris, and I know thoughts and prayers are with his family today. And remembering him, he did build a lot of homes and made the American dream possible for a lot of people that still live here in Victorville today. And then also, just to announce, on Friday at 11:00, out in Barstow, we will have the Linwood Road Grade Separation Project groundbreaking. This has been years in the making, and another great project that we've been able to bring forward into fruition at Sandbags. So that's at 11:00 a.m. on Friday.
And as our Sandbag rep, I understand you're going to represent the city at that?
I will be there, just in case any of the rest of you want her to go.
Councilmember Vias.
None at this time.
Councilmember Kennedy. That concludes our meeting, and I want to thank the staff, members of the audience that showed up, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you. Good night, everyone.